So I um. Like, you know, which like.
Hello, welcome to the fortieth meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Please turn off your cell phones. And when addressing the commission, please remember to state and spell your name and to speak into the microphone. Uh calling agenda item uh.
No, no minutes.
No minutes. So if there's anyone present who wishes to provide testimony on agenda items number one through twenty three. You may do so now or wait until the item is called. A calling agenda item number one, application number two five dash zero two zero one seven dash one. The two five dash zero two zero one seven that. One hundred and twenty two, the Ritz Carlton Hotel Company.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. I remember the commission is your I Robert Weal on behalf of the Ritz Carlton Oahu Turtle Bay. This is an application for a special liquor license. We do have no, we have no changes to this case's report. We do have an update as to the neighborhood board. We did submit that neighborhood board proof of mailing on on April twenty third. And also the zoning clearance approval on May fifth, May sixth. Of this year. And also, I just want to clarify that supplemental indicates. That there will be hosted. Um it's hosted only for special events, but primarily non-hosted alcohol.
Mr. Has any questions?
I have no question. Motion to approve applications two five dash zero two zero one seven dash one to two five dash zero two zero one seven dash one two two inclusive.
Been moved in second to approve application number two five dash zero two zero one seven dash one. The two five dash zero two zero one seven dash one two two inclusive. Any names or reservations seeing none, I also vote I the application is approved. Calling agenda item out of order number nine, request number two five dash zero two zero one nine.
Robert Weal on behalf of the Ritz Carlton. Oh, with Turtle Bay. This is a request for reduction of fees. I noticed on the application issued it did indicate a date of last contact with applicant. On October first, twenty twenty four. Just want to clarify that was my email to the department requesting for the issuance of the temporary and they did issue it the next day. Um October second, so I was very pleased, but that was the last communication, but we're very happy the temporary was issued uh on a timely manner, in a timely manner.
Okay.
I don't have any, I just um no any question, I'll just find correct.
That's correct.
Okay, I have no other questions.
So he qualified, right?
Just for the specials.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Motion to approve request number two five dash zero two zero one nine.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve request number two five dash zero two zero one nine. Any names or reservation seeing none, I also vote I the request is.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number two, application number two five dash zero two zero five four. Rules in catering by City Blonde Inc. So.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Tyler Lizama representing closing catering by City Blonde. But this application is going to be graduation approximately two hundred people. Bar will be inside and there will be two HPDs on site.
So I'll make my normal, my normal for for this time of the season for sure, but um so my comment will go for all of your applications you have here today. Let's make sure that we continue to watch for um passing of drinks outside since you are going to be using the courtyard and it is graduations. So just make sure we don't have any of that stuff happening.
Absolutely.
Thank you. That was my only comment. Motion to approve application number two five dash zero two zero five four second.
Been moved and seconded to approve application number two five dash zero two zero five four. Any days or reservation seeing none, I also vote I the application is approved. You calling agenda item number three, application number two five dash zero two zero five five. Tools and catering by CineBlonde.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Tyler Lizama, representing tools and catering by CineBlonde. But this application is going to be a graduation approximately two hundred people. Bar will be inside and there will be two HPDs on site.
I have no questions. So motion to approve or application number two five dash zero two zero five five second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two five dash zero two zero five five. Any needs or reservation seeing none, I also vote I the application is approved. Calling agenda item number four, application number two five dash zero two zero five seven. Tools and catering by CineBlonde.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Tyler Lizama, representing closing catering by CineBlonde. But this application is going to be a writing reception. Um bar is going to be. Outside in the courtyard approximately a hundred people and there will be one HPD in on site.
Okay, commissioners, questions?
Motion to approve application number two five dash zero two zero five seven second.
Then moved and seconded to approve application number two five dash zero two zero five seven. The names are reservation seeing none, I also vote I the application is approved. Calling agenda item number five, application number two five dash zero two zero five eight like tools and catering. Those and catering by CineBlonde.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Tyler Lizama, representing closing catering by CineBlonde. But this application is going to be a graduation approximately two hundred people. Bar will be inside and there will be two HPDs on site.
Motion to, I have no questions. Motion to approve application number two five dash zero two zero five eight second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two five dash zero two zero five eight. Any names or reservation seeing none, I also vote I the application is approved.
Yes, wish us. Right, so we can ask what happened to Sheila. We haven't seen her.
Yeah.
Promoted. Yeah, she's there, you know, she's taking care of some of it, so.
Okay, calling agenda item number six, applications number two five dash. Zero two one seven five dash one to two five dash zero two one seven five dash two one, Red Zone Sports Bar and Grill Inc.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Keith Kiuchi for the applicant Red Zone Sparks Bar and Grill Inc. We have no additions or corrections to the investigator report. This is a. The second temp runs out on May twenty second.
Questions?
Um so it'll be probably for the next one. My question, this I didn't see something marked, but I'll confirm it there, but I don't have any qu- questions at this point.
Okay.
Yeah. Motion to approve applications number two five dash zero two one seven five dash one. To two five dash zero two one seven five dash two one inclusively second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve applications number two five dash zero two one seven five dash one. Two five dash zero two one seven five dash two one inclusive and a maze reservation. Seeing done, I also vote I the application is approved. Calling out of order agenda item number eleven, request number two five dash zero two two zero five, Red Zone Sports Bar and Grill Inc.
Again, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Keith Kiuchi for the applicant Red Zone Sparks Bar and Grill Inc.
Okay, so my question. So Mr. Kucha on the form for the reduction of fees, right? Talks about second temporary license issued. There's no dates listed there, but then when you look at your prior. Item number six, you had listed that there is. These things run out, your second temp runs out on May twenty second, twenty twenty five.
That's correct.
Okay, so.
Such as an admission in the form.
Yeah, it should have been the second temp runs out on May twenty second.
Yeah, so your first, so you did two. Temps already technically.
We did two temps, not, yeah, period, yeah. The the application was submitted.
Okay.
Um. Believe late August last year. And we don't even have a pre uh pre-lent.
Alright, so I guess for the record, if you can state when your first nine day temp.
That's fine.
Putting in expired and when your second, because technically by it not being on the form, the question we're starting to look at now is. Do these, do people putting in these requests for reduction in fees qualify based on what we're looking at as our? Thing as our. Pilot program because it was specifically set up for people that have burned through those two temps to get that.
Understood, we'll we'll correct that.
Okay, so I guess if you know the dates of your two temps, if you want to put it on the record and then correct it, then we can have it there if you know it.
I I know the second temp runs out on May twenty second. I don't know off the top of my head when the first temp ended, so.
Yes, I guess my thing is this, right? If it gets finalized, right, we would want you to correct the um request. To put in the dates of the two temps and when they expire.
We can do that.
Okay, I have no other comments or questions that night. Motion to approve request number two five dash zero two two zero five second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve request number two five dash zero two two zero five. Any names or reservation seeing none, I also vote I the application is approved. I, yeah.
Okay, I got it next.
Oh, you got that next one? All right, uh calling agenda item number seven, application number two five dash zero zero seven six two. Makaha Golf and Resort LLC.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Keith Kiuchi for the applicant. We have no corrections or changes to the investigator's report and I guess to. Commissioner Hollinger's point, we're gonna have to file a special license on this because our second temp runs out in June.
Okay.
So um where the the second temp runs out on June twenty third. And there's not much of a gap and in this instance, there's a very good reason why. The investigative report was not done and that's because the floor plan for the clubhouse. Was unreadable. And when we went to GPP, it was still unreadable, so we literally had to have. The consulting go out to the clubhouse, do a new drawing. And that's what happened, so.
Yeah. And again, I don't think it, as we go through this, I don't think any of us will have issues with those. We just want to make sure those ones are listed because that's how we determine.
Well, that's that's why to your point, when we do the special and the special is not going to be for that long a time because this. The second temp would run out on the twenty third and we're gonna ask if you approve this, that the public hearing be on the twenty six. So what that means is we're likely to say we'll pick up the license on July one because otherwise we'd have to. You know, pick it up before then and renew it and type timeframe is kind of short, so yeah.
Totally understood. Got it. I have no questions for this one. Motion to approve application number two five dash zero zero six, I'm sorry. Application number two five dash zero zero seven six two second.
Been moved and seconded to approve application number two five dash zero zero seven six two. Any names or reservation seeing none, I also vote I the application is approved.
And just so the commission knows, I sent a letter to the commission today and we're gonna ask that the public hearing be seven weeks instead of eight weeks.
Process.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, you'll stick around for number eight?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. The annual right.
Okay, calling agenda item number eight. Uh request number two five dash zero two one zero six, Rumus Spear LLC, DVA Arnold Beach Bar and Grill.
Hello. Good evening, Chairman. My name is Debbie Eichelberger, D E V V I E E I C H E L B E R G E R.
He usually making appearance for um. Randall Spear, who's the uh minority partner, so maybe might be easier by explain. This matter is still in litigation, it is on appeal. And that's why the license has not been transferred. Um the arbitrator ruled that Ms. Michael Berger had a seventy five percent ownership. Mr. Spear had a twenty five percent ownership. That was appealed, but I can. Almost, almost assure you, this will be the last year. Because the intermediate court of appeal just issued a notice of no oral argument last week. And when they do that, usually the case is decided within. Two months and even if I took it up to the Supreme Court, if I didn't like the decision, it'll be done within. So that's trying to give you some assurance you don't have to deal with this next year.
I have no questions. I was here for the year before.
Yeah, I know, it's 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 like.
It's gone on for a little while.
Five, yeah, five or six years, yeah.
Ten years.
So also, can you? Can I just do a short thing on how come this thing went up to the ICA?
It went up to the ICA because it went, it went to a um. Went to an arbitration. The arbitrator ruled that seventy five percent was owned by Ms. Eichelberger. Twenty five percent was owned by. Mr. Spear, but the reason it went up for a couple of infirmities, one. The arbitrator, Mr. Spear is a convicted felon, so by statute it cannot be awarded twenty five percent or more. But the arbitrator did that anyway in contravention of the liquor commission rules. There were some, also some irregularities during the arbitration proceedings. Um. What's more likely to happen, because generally the appellate courts. Affirm an arbitration decision that a circuit court judge. Has certified. But the troubling part is the twenty five percent because that's a direct contravention, contravention to the liquor commission law, so. The arbitrator entered that even knowing that. So.
So is it a possibility I see could throw it back down to circuits to you?
Yep, absolutely. If you know what what could very well happen is that the ICAs. Goes goes in roles, say, you know what, arbitrator, you you made a mistake because. There's this statute that says Mr. Spear can't hold twenty five percent or more, right? It's very possible that that's what's going to happen.
Mm hmm.
Uh, yeah.
And then how long could that take?
Hopefully less than this one till. But the uh intermediate court of appeals, it's getting a lot better. It used to be a four. Your weight now you're looking about three years, four months. That may not seem like much.
They just brought on not the soldiers, so.
But as but as a practitioner. Um and one of the things I should let you know, it's I have fifty eight cases on appeal. That's more than any single law firm in the state. Much that much less than any six thirty, so I track this. And I think the intermediate court of appeals is doing the best they can. Because they've been running short a judge for like a year.
Yeah, so. Reasonably this case could come back before the commission in six to nine months or longer?
Well, once I think it's affirmed, once the the ownership issue is affirmed, then. Ms. Eichelberger can file the uh appropriate documents with the commission. And the reason why she hasn't been able to is because. If we we follow the O T. And frankly, that's the reason why.
Okay, thank you for the explanation.
Hey. Any other question before I make a motion? All right, motion to approve request number two five dash zero two one zero six.
Been moved and seconded to approve request number two five dash zero two one zero six. The names are reservation seeing none, I also vote I the request is approved. Good luck.
Maybe for the last time, we'll see.
Promise?
No.
No.
Sorry.
Yeah, we have no way of promising that one.
I can do it. Calling agenda item number ten, request number two five dash zero two one nine one. From Martin Santo on behalf of the National Guard. Uh grandparents for great. Of Hawaii.
Good afternoon, chair members of commission.
And I guess as a disclosure, I was, I believe, a member of the National Guard. Is that the National Guard Association, the local one?
Yeah, then, yeah. I said it could also make the disclosure. I'm a retired from National Guard Association. And it won't affect my ability to make a. Fair and objective decision.
What he said, okay.
Thank you for the disclosure. Uh Grigny Show Authorization appearing on behalf of their requesting party. Basically, we are preparing a permanent license application. For the requesting party. Just just some logistical problems we gotta address. And then uh. We'll be submitting a, we we have or may have. Be submitting shortly a special license. Us for June of two thousand twenty five.
All right. So you have some questions.
Oh, boy.
No, so so technically, right, the way the licenses, the way these these are. Put together, right? The rule basically talks about you can get three days. But no more than twelve of them within a quarter, so that's forty eight days. Okay? Now, I I I'm a firm believer rules were put there for a reason, okay? And that my question is. How many days more out of the than forty eight are you really looking for? Because I'm not. Personally open to just waiving this rule so you can use three hundred and sixty five days. For this license, because I mean. They're put there for a reason. How many days are you looking for? Yeah, I read the rule wrong, but that's my understanding of it.
Honestly, I can't give you an answer for that right now.
Okay.
You know, we just submitted the uh request. On the, based upon the current circumstances.
Okay.
With the. The, you know, reviewing any applications, et cetera. So um if if, you know, if you want to continue this matter for one week, I can.
Uh for certain, why you revise statute section ninety two dash four and subsection ninety two dash five eight four to consult with the board's attorneys. On questions and issues on a matter pertaining to the board's powers, duties, privileges, immunities and liabilities uh relating to. Um.
Agenda item number ten, request number two five dash zero two one nine one.
Uh I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for this purpose to discuss the waiver of this. I would.
Second, or I make the motion second.
Going to executive session.
Ah, okay, we're back from executive session where we were discussing the rule three dash eight two dash three one dash six A. Uh, requiring that for any for-profit organization. And one of the things that we wanted to ask, this is a nonprofit?
Correct, the calendar should be amended. It is a nonprofit organization.
All right.
All right. So I'll make a motion to amend the current posted agenda on for it to read. Uh, requesting waiver of rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-one dot point six A requiring that any, instead of it being for-profit organization, less nonprofit organization may apply for a special license and increments up to three days.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to amend, uh, the agenda item to read. As a, for a nonprofit rather than for-profit organization. Any names or reservations seen none, I also vote aye. The modification of the agenda is approved. Now, coming back to agenda item number ten. Um, that this is a nonprofit entity. Uh, that authority is delegated back to the administration, so you can just
Okay, okay, listen, thank you.
Calling agenda item number eleven, quest number two Calling agenda item number twelve, uh, request number two five dash zero two two zero nine from
Good afternoon, Chairperson Hong and members of the commission, Brian Chief for applicant Den Kalkawa Restaurants Inc. Uh, we're here to request an additional contention of time, uh, to pick up the temporary license due to unforeseen stops and delays.
So based off of this, you're looking for an additional six months, correct?
Uh, that's correct, until November first, twenty twenty-five.
In November first, twenty twenty-five, okay.
Do you want me to put something really quick on the record? The rea, I mean, we have delegated authority to approve, uh, uh, temporaries and renewals of temporaries, uh, administratively. The reason this is before you is be, what we don't have authority to do is to, um, go back in time and restore uh, days, because what they want is when they pick up that second temp, they have the four hundred twenty days. And that's the reason why we put it before you, because we don't have that authority to go back in time and restore any days that may have been uh, sort of used but not used in connection with that second temp.
But in this case, nothing has been used because
Right.
That's correct.
Okay, so before I made a motion to extend it to six months, the question I have for you is, is six months going to be enough time? Because, right, if you go six months and it's still there, you're gonna need to come back over here in November to do the exact same thing.
That's correct, and I, I can't guarantee the six months will be enough, but uh, our clients have learned to be more cautious and understand that the problem is that there's a transformer, things being solved by Hiko. And they expect it to be done the next couple of months, but just to be safe, they want
Okay.
Six months.
Yeah, okay. So, I guess the question I would have for administration, so if we say six, if we were to say eight months, let's just say. But would they be able to come and pick it up when it is
Tomorrow, they could pick up tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, but the, the thing we have to confirm right is that we're going to allow them to use the days
Yes.
That were not used.
Right.
Okay.
The four hundred twenty days.
Okay.
Whenever they pick up that second temp.
Okay. So what I'm going to do is I am going to make a motion, but I'm going to give you more time. Because just in case.
Okay.
Okay, so Hold on, let me get back to this need to open up. So I'm gonna make a motion, unless there's other questions.
No.
No. Okay, so my motion is going to be to approve request number two five dash zero two two zero nine with, um, an extension of eight months. And that you'll be able to use the full hundred and twenty days once the license is picked up.
We don't have to change the agenda and then do that, or?
We have not in the past, I mean, Keith, yes.
Okay.
Because you're changing it on your own versus a request.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, if we're gonna make the request, then we'll be helped.
Okay.
But that's your grand decision.
All right, second, eight months.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve a question number two five dash zero two two zero nine. Uh, with, as amended to eight month extension, any names or reservations seen none, I also vote aye, the question is approved.
Thank you.
Okay, um, for agenda items number thirteen through twenty-one, and I have a motion.
Motion of adoption of decision and order for agenda items number thirteen through twenty-one inclusive.
It's been moved and seconded to approve agenda items number thirteen through twenty-one. Any names or reservations seen none, I also vote aye, the motion varies. Uh, calling agenda item number twenty-two administrative matters.
And while he's approaching, if there is a, a process and procedure, um, uh, agenda item topic you want on next week's agenda, please let us know.
Okay.
You know, if you're in commission yourself, you're both administrator, I'm looking at the commission. Um, just, just a couple of things on, on my end here, um. We've begun the renewal process and so I believe, I think it was Tuesday. Uh, we had received a hundred twenty-eight applications, uh. Issued sixty-one, um. On, on fifteen of them deficient, uh, thirty-three were approved and some, and sixteen are still going through the process. There've been, also been a couple of across and also one license that is not being renewed. So, um. So I, it, it's going, but I think this is one of those things based on, on last year, kind of like gathers momentum as still month goes by, so, um, we'll probably get busy. I think, uh, you know, you know, we've been very focused on, on, on hiring and, and, you know, I, I think, uh, next week we're going to be hired, we're going to do the process of interviewing, uh, we see the list. We're gonna be interviewing, uh, for LCI once again. But I also wanted to note that we have had, uh, we have had some LCI teams who have gained the necessary experience to go through the promotional interview for LCI three. Couple of weeks ago, we, uh, one interview occurred a couple of weeks ago. But that's still going through the, the paperwork process, uh, I don't know to establish yet what we need. And additionally, uh, another investigator recently completed their, their, uh, their time as an LCI team. Uh, a, and so, uh, we are opening up the, uh, internal recruitment for, uh, for an LCI three. And hopefully, you know, uh, that individual decides that they want to apply for the, for the promotion and, 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 and that will be there for them if they, if they want to do that. Uh, that's great. Thank God. And just want to let you know too that, uh, we actually had two investigators, two LCI ones go to training in Texas. Uh, it's, uh, training provided by the, uh, council for also for licensing enforcement regulations, uh, clear. Uh, and essentially, they, they went through what was known as a, uh, national certified, uh, investigator inspector uh, basic training. And, uh, I think that the, the good thing about it is I think it, it augments some of the things that we do and, and maybe, you know, puts a, puts a finer point to so, some things like, for example, uh, report, like, uh, specifying before adjudicate, uh, adjudicated bottom, um, investigative process, principles of evidence still. I, I think subjects areas that would be helpful in, in, as they, as they try to gain skills in, in, in the position. Uh, and hopefully, uh, what I'm hoping to do is that we'll be able to have a little bit of a deep breath and learn more about the things they, 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 uh, what they experienced and whether or not they found that, that augmentation, uh, helpful in, in terms of their development.
Was this liquor specific or just?
It's not, it's not liquor specific, it's more, it's more broadly, the, the, the entity itself is, deals, deals more broadly with all, uh, with all regulatory bodies, so. So it's, it's more general, but I think, uh, you know, regardless of, of the fact that it's not, not liquor. I think when you look about the principles about, you know, uh, how you handle evidence, that, that's gonna be, uh, that, this is gonna be universal. Uh, how you, I, how you write, of course, I know that, uh, each agency probably has specific uh, formatting that they do, but I think in terms of, you know, who, what's where and when. Uh, that, that's, that's, that's gonna be consistent and comfortable in terms of, of, of being objective and, and important.
That's a question. So was liquor funding this training? Or it came from like a federal grant or?
Oh, no, uh, it's part of our budget, uh, we look, uh, one of the, one of the system, the, the recommendations was that we look for training for our investigators. And so we've done that, uh, clears one of them. And fortunately for me, I, I had the, and, you know, when I came on board, the, the the, the liquor investigators conference actually, uh, had, uh, had some had, had training on, on this area. And, and so, uh, thought that, that maybe, that it would be a good thing for, to offer to people who, who come on board. I think for, for us, uh, since it's I think for for us, uh, since it's part parcel of most of our app. Training is is a, is part parcel of our our budgetary, uh. Uh, asks when when we go through the process, uh, you know, uh, it'd be nice to know, uh, when. Particular uh sessions are ongoing, so that we can, we we can make sure that. Uh, we're able to send people maybe in in segments as opposed to on lots, right? So it's always difficult to say, hey, we're gonna send. Six people, because the question always is, who's here to do the job? But if you if we know how these things are scheduled and and we and we budget for, say, ten, you know, uh, then. Given the, given the the number of in investigators that we have, especially newer ones, say, okay, uh. You may benefit from this and go there, and usually what we do, where we, what we do is we ask, uh. Enforcement to see who amongst amongst some of the people would want to go. And and so if somebody raised their hand, some.
Especially on a continuing education fashion or with, uh. Uh, body worn cameras and those types of things, it would be good to have additional.
And you know, e- even something like, you know, uh. Investigator safety, something that that they that they that they cover, um. Additionally, uh, once you go through this, then then, uh, it it also, uh. Is is basically, uh, the can, uh, the. Condition for you taking higher level courses would clear. Uh, and and hopefully, you know, that that's the idea, it's that they gain, uh, certification in 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 different things.
At the symposium, I had a chance to talk with the, um. Uh, the health inspector, and it seems there are just so many. Uh, corollaries, right, between what we do and what they do and kind of the the issues that are involved, so. I have a question on the data migration, how is that going?
Yes, so, um. Yeah, so, uh, I I think I refer to you that we we had the, the go. Uh, essentially, the 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 notice received and that was provided to the vendor. I think, uh, Anna, uh, this is administrator, her eye. Uh, Doug O and Howard J. I can't, I can never pronounce his last name, um, are going to meet with the vendor, I think, I think maybe next week. Uh, to talk about what what was.
Project.
The processes. So, knock at wood, uh, I'm hoping that, you know, after that moving, uh. Uh, some implementation can begin, I know, I know the funds are uncovered, so. I'm hoping that that goes straight. And that also, that also will involve, uh, the applications for random inspection we'll send and to historic to the location, please.
So, I guess a a quick follow-up for the investigator workshop for clear and things like that, you talked about. These people that have passed or went to this most recent one are able to go to the next level, right? But is there possibilities where this entry level will still happen again? In the future where we can budget to send other individuals, because ultimately, if it's only those people. Two people that can move up, then you're really only training two people to train everyone else, so I'm just confirming we're able to still.
They allow, so they provide it, they provide in-person several times a year. Uh, but they also provide virtual, so there's an opportunity to use, uh, either one of those.
Okay.
And and the idea is that, uh, whoever comes in, uh, as they go through the LCI line. Process.
Okay.
That they'll be able to trace this to augment the training that will get admission. Uh, so hopefully, it'll be open to everybody and and should be run into situations where we don't have as much money, uh. The the possibility of taking virtual, virtually, it it is there, and so the training can be provided. And then, once that's done, then of course, then, you know, they they've got the preconditions for the next higher level training.
Okay. That was, I just wanted to mention, thank you.
Our question. Alright, and with that, uh, item twenty three, any announcements? Yeah, one announcement, our new core.
Okay. Um, we do have our council, different council for advice on the. Um, we'll work together for the next couple of weeks and then. By the end of the week. Let's check out.
Okay, alright, and I guess that's it.